Noted, Laura is on vacation, so Board Representative item will not be here tonight. Any changes to the agenda?
So, based on the fiscal personnel meeting, I think we're looking at wanting to add pick-up purchase as an action item.
So, we're going to add pick-up as 9.5 and then we'll, post-session will be 9.6 for the record. All right. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
So moved.
Motion by David, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Raleigh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Passes 6-0. All right, we have public comment, it looks like we have Joel Altobelli would like to talk. Amy's going to time you, you get five minutes. This will not be a dialogue, we'll just listen to what you have to say, okay?
Okay.
So, as soon as Amy gets her timer going, you can go.
I won't be that long.
Okay.
Since there won't be dialogue. I just have the comment of transparency, I know a lot of people on the board are always talking about transparency. And one of the things that was mentioned at the last board meeting with the admin was for the board members to set up a private meeting with the superintendent if they had any questions. And to me, that takes away the transparency. You know, I mean, if you have questions, why not the questions here at the table like earlier in the work session? You know, and you had that work session after the, after the board meeting, and then the chair recommended that if anybody has any questions, to go meet with the superintendent, privately, set up an appointment, and then you guys were going to figure out if it was going to be added on there or not, whatever. And I just think we lose transparency then when that conversation isn't up in the open.
Okay.
And if you have any questions as far as what would be some good follow-up questions that you guys were asking earlier, come and see me, because I have some questions, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any rebel recognition? Sandy, want to talk about our dancers?
Well, our dancers took eighth in the state, and that was the first time in 16 years that we've sent a dance team down there, so we're super excited about that, so.
Any other things, anybody's heard? Any other things anybody wants to bring forward? All right, let's move on to 6.0 and reports, board committee reports. Do you want to?
We have policy last week.
Wasn't it?
It was the week after our last meeting.
Okay, I lose track. But the ones that are being brought forth today for approval of the first reading are 509.2, open enrollment lottery process, 534 unpaid meal charges, and 535 service animals in schools. And the service animals in schools was the new one brought forward by the MSBA.
Correct.
And we recommend that we adopt it as it's written. You can have a dog or a mini horse as a service animal, so if anybody, that's a thing.
Don't encourage the mini horse.
Yeah, yeah, let's not do that. A few redlined items on that, unpaid meal charges, you guys should have gotten a copy of that in your email, any questions on that?
And we did some updates with it in purple, as you saw.
Right, that's right.
Based on that, that dialogic meeting.
And then, open enrollment process, 509.2, the changes that we are making, really not much, we're just taking the ratios away. Same number of kids in each grade capped at that level, same lottery or priority process. Any questions? And then we had an oversight committee meeting on Friday, do you want to touch on that one?
Good, move a wall here, move a wall there, nothing, no big changes, three hours, a lot of discussion. So, basically, parking lot was added on to, to accommodate the amount of cars that needed to have, some numbers were given out after some discussion and sliding and moving, I think we're real close to what the budget was, very close.
Parking lot here in Glendon?
Yeah. Extended further than the original price?
They had 325, well, if you count the ones we have now, we have, we're at like 300, but the classes coming up, it wasn't big enough, so they extended it, did things to it. Chances are, the building is going to stay, it's probably more work, more expensive to move it.
This building on here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Than it is to make it all parking lot. And I agree with that, they kind of said it'd be probably the $20,000 range to move it, and then you've got to redo it.
When you just will spend the money extending out farther if you want to.
Yeah.
Get better use of the money.
Ronnie, I guess that's about all I can remember.
Well, we had to try to make some areas to make cutbacks to get closer to the budget, and one is actually this room, right, initially, right now, we're not looking at building the classrooms on this side for currently, because we don't really need them, and that would save money and get us away from major repair to.
Can always do it in the future.
Exactly. Because they can be standalone projects.
And still maybe backing away from extending out the current lunchroom thing to the east, or saving some square footage there, cutting the storage on the east end of the new gym probably in half. We've still got the signs in, Phil, it's been taken out, but it's not forgotten about, it's going to be arch, designed and go through the whole process to see where we're at at the end, so they had to give some indications where they should look after designing and going the best thing, so. Major thing is we've kept the community slash board room on the entrance over there, and rejockeyed some rooms a little bit in the Dilworth side, kept the concession area there on the north end. Lots of places to move scrubbers to, to try to store in some of the old areas, so we don't have to go through the kitchen and different things, so really good meeting, you know, discussed a lot of things, and architects and construction felt confident in it, so.
And we had a personnel meeting, and we talked about the truck, about the district purchasing a new truck, and so they had gotten bids from Gateway and Muscatell, and so that will be on our, that was what 9.5 is tonight. We talked about, we just kind of looked over some areas of assistant principals, just talked about looking at other districts around our area and what they have exactly as far as principals, assistant principals, dean of students, what they have, just so we have accurate figures to look at for that. And then we have received word that we have some teachers that are looking at the early retirement package, but no names or anything are being public at this time, but there is an issue that we need to discuss tomorrow night on the contract, to make sure that they are getting some of their insurance benefits and things like that, just making sure that the verbiage is what it needs to be, so nobody is missing out on something on that, but that will be discussed tomorrow night.
Any other? All right, it's superintendent report time.
You going to time me?
Yeah.
This will be a little bit longer, but I think it's, I have to take advantage when we have a, have a big audience, because a lot of this stuff is very pertinent directly with, with staff. First one, all of these, other than that Safe School Zone grant, are in your handouts, so basically, the bottom half of your packet is all of my handouts. There's a few handouts that will also be going to everybody that's here, I think we've got 60 copies, so we should be, we should be pretty, pretty close for some of these different topics. But the first one is just FYI, we received information last week that that Safe School Zone grant that we talked about last fall, we're waiting on, we thought by, we'd know by November, we are actually getting that. So, I'm just going to read that first part, this came from Bretta Miller, "We're incredibly excited to share that Safe Kids Fargo-Moorhead has been selected for a Safe School Zones Grant, just three coalitions were selected nationwide." So, what they've done is they've chosen, our project is based off of pedestrian safety assessment performed at the elementary, the Dilworth, Dilworth Building, and because of it becoming the new elementary building, it's, it couldn't be better timing to have this. So, they're looking at, the grant is partnering with the University of North Carolina Highway Safety Research Center, so those people are actually going to be coming up to the Fargo-Moorhead area, and they're putting a coalition together, you can see from everybody that was included in this email, so we're the only school in the FM ferry that they're going, that's going to be getting this. This is specifically for DGF this time, which is pretty cool. So, the timing with, with, since we know we've got this conversion that we'll be doing with the site, couldn't work out any better. So, this is all about looking at, how can we make this based on what plan we're going to be putting in, to have the crosswalks, to have everything, you know, they're going to be working with, and we'll have, notice it's, you've got police force on this, you've got city leaders from Dilworth, they're all invited to this, and they'll put a coalition together and help us create a plan for it. So, good news.
Awesome.
The session update from MASA, you all should have received session updates from MREA and such, I always get one from MASA, a lot of times, it's the same information. I did think what, at the bottom of that first page, House File 3164, so when you look at that House Education Policy Committee, about halfway through there, it talks about, "Provide Grants to School Districts to Develop and Implement Vaping Prevention Programs," imagine that. So, we'll see how far that one goes, it is a statewide issue, we know that, so there's, that one should get some traction. On the second page, on the, there's a lot of bills about adding more requirements, there's just, we know how that works, that will always happen, but another one that I think I, I'd like you just to keep alert to is House File 3343, it's the fourth one down where it says, "Linking the Extended Time Revenue Formula to Future Increases in the General Education Basic Formula Allowance." That one is something we have been asking for, for, since I've, since I've been a principal, it always comes up. The issue is, is like ALCs and you think about rebel time and rebel success, any of the after-school programming, when, the dollars that are generated, that's generated by having the students actually, based on their attendance, their time, they are getting, they can get more pupil units, they can generate, up to another point two. But, part of the problem with the funding is that it's locked in at a rate from the 1990s, so it's not at the current per pupil rate, I mean, it's, it's down, it's like 4,000 something. So, this has a big effect if they're going to move this to the current, which would be great, and again, it's come up a few different years, but we'll see if it actually happens. The next one in the handout, again, this is more just awareness than anything, and a lot of these things from this point forward have to do with just getting some clarification out there, because I think as you get phone calls, as you get questions from people in the public, and the rumor mill, as far as data, what's out there, what's being offered, what's, what's comparable schools and what else not. So, this is, there's many surveys that we end up doing as superintendents and the principals do, Lakes Country put some of them together, some of them are put together from one of the other co-ops. Again, I know you've got to have your glasses for it, but this is one of the salary surveys that was done this year, regional, 1819, so this past year's salaries, teacher salary survey, it has about 20 school districts, you'll notice, and I'm going to read them off as far as the schools, because there's, this is the broadest one that I have, Ada Borup, Red Lake County Central, so if you don't know some of these initials, Red Lake County Central, Menomone, Red Lake Falls, Stephen Argyle Central, Kitzin Central, Norman County East, Warren Elveridge, Waslow, Bagley, Thief River Falls, Climax, East Grand Forks, Fertile Bell, Trammy, Winimack, Lake Park, Ottoman, Yuland, Hirdell, Holly, Crookston, Roseau, and DGF. And the, the three parts, the three rows that are in color are on purpose, because it's, it's the comparative data, looking at the highest, the upper left of the matrix, in other words, BA Step 1 for all these school districts, and then the next one is the Masters, the straight Masters one in the middle, and then the last one is the MA 30. And so, what you can see is a comparison between all of the districts in their matrix, what everybody starts them out at, what is the terminal point, the last step for all these school districts is reported by the school districts, and then what's the far right, lower right one. Of the 20 districts, you can see that we're in the starting, we're, we're pretty much in the middle, I think there's seven school districts that have a higher starting, other than us, you know, and sometimes, it's some of the rural ones, because it's harder to get them. You'll notice the one, one of the highest ones, in fact, the highest one is Menomone. When you look at the Masters, the Masters, ours tops out at the Masters at 68, 948, the next highest one is Roseau at 66, 391. That's the top two.
No, Crookston, 64.
Or did I miss one?
64.
Six, I need my glasses.
They're tiny.
Yeah, yeah, there's a six, Roseau's 66.
Ada Borup's probably the.
And Ada Borup's 67, yeah, Ada Borup, but DGF is the highest. And then, at the MA 30, I believe it's Roseau.
Roseau's the highest.
Is the highest, and then we're second. So, again, just survey data, so that you have it. Next piece, because you've got a lot of handouts coming from me, and this one is associated, we know that these meetings are all open meetings, tomorrow night's meeting, when we do negotiations, is an open meeting. So, this isn't stuff that's hidden, it shouldn't be hidden, and so, we should make sure that we're getting clarifying information out there. You know, it's, I've been contacted, you, many of you have been contacted about .9 raises and, and whatever it happens to be, there's only one offer that's been made on the table, just for public clarification. The board committee made an offer, $750,000, over two year, 250,000 per year, again, in negotiation language, you've got to do the first year, whatever the first year is, you've got to add that to the second year, and that's why it's 250, 250, because in the second year, you're going to have the 250 and 250, because it's a $500, $500,000 increase overall. So, what, the first thing, and Tracy, and we've got handouts for everybody on this one, because I truly do want to make sure we're all talking the same information. So, the first handout for everybody is just a back-to-back sheet, shows the existing salary schedule, 1819, no shock, it's in the master agreement, the staff, I'm sure should all know that, what it is, and where they're at. And as far as for, for staff being able to figure out, you know, teachers, teachers' salary increases are different than administrators, you either, you just have a set amount, if I'm, if I'm going to get a 3% increase, what was my salary before and what's my salary now? But there's really three components that make up for a teacher salary increase, because you're looking at, do you get a step, did you make a lane change, and then did the school district add money onto the matrix? So, those three pieces all go into, when you're actually truly looking at what the salaries are. So, the sheet that they're passing out has the existing salary schedule on one side, and then on the backside, what I did, I went through and took the matrix and showed what the step increases are. So, you can see the built-in, if people make a step, you can see what the built-in amount of increase is. So, whatever we talk about adding to the matrix, anybody who's getting a step is getting the step that's given right there, and the lowest step out of the whole matrix is at MA, MA 30, at Step 17, it's 1.98, so it's, it's just under 2. But most of them vary, it varies from 2 to, all the way up to, you know, in the mid-3 range. So, that's there as part of the raise, and of course, when we look at, when we actually run the reports at the end of the year, GNE's reports on payroll for the salaries, it will end up having exactly what the salary was the previous year and what the new salary is the next year, and so then, that's a salary increase. If you made X amount of dollars one year and you make 3,000 more the next year, that's your salary increase. So, these are the percents, you know, you get the percents for the step, you get the percent of whatever's added to the matrix. So, I want everybody to have that. Now, as far as that proposal by the school board, just for clarification, so school board, I gave you two different examples of what the matrix is, could be. Again, we all know that, I hope everybody knows, that what was put out to the, in negotiations, 750,000 total package. So, there's a couple, there's many ways you can do these matrices. One way is, you give everybody the step, and then you find out how much money is left, and you add that to the schedule. That's usually what has been done almost every, every time, it's been done every time I've been here. That's one way. We talked, early on, and I've talked to the lead negotiators for a while about this, this, this does happen, these problems can happen anytime you get very, very high percentages, where you, you got issues, you got issues trying to come up with, how do you get a balance? Because this group has about 37% of the staff that are at that terminal step, either that Step 18, or 17, or 16, depending upon which one is, which lane you're on, because you can see with the matrix that they end at different amount of years where you hit the terminal point. And I say the terminal point, because if you do the typical, we're going to give everybody the step, and then we're going to put so much on, on the salary schedule. Those people that are at that terminal step, they're only going to get that increase that's added to the schedule. So, the first one I gave you was trying to max out, how much could go on the actual matrix, based on what steps we have, and you'll see that, and this wasn't because, this was, I lucked out on that it came out to exactly 750,000, as you noticed, but the true number, and there was numbers floating around, I'm not sure where they came from, but as the board can see, and I want you to have this, so that if you get asked questions, you can actually add, the true numbers are 1.075 on the first year, that's the true amount.
That's being added to the matrix.
That's being added to the matrix, you take every step and you add 1.075. So, any employee should be able to figure out exactly how much they would be getting for a raise on that, because just look at your existing one, go one step down to see what kind of a raise you got there, add 1.075 to it, there's your percent increase. 60-some percent of the employees would have over a 3% increase, anywhere from 3% to 4% increase, that's a fact. It's simple, look at your matrix, look at the, look at the steps, look at the percent increase at each step. So, that's one way, but again, it means 60-some percent of your people are getting raises of 3 to 4, and it means that 30-some percent are going to get 1.075, the ones that already had 70-some thousand. A second way that you could do the same thing, except if you want everybody to get the exact same raise, again, these aren't the only ones, but I wanted to put two of them out there, so at least everybody's hearing, a couple of ways. Another way, you can leave everybody, you freeze them at the particular step, and you give the actual amount of the raise to everybody. So, you put 2 point, because, by the way, that 750,000, that comes out as an overall average of 2.67 first year, 2.59 the second year. By the second method, if you take and simply put it right on the salary schedule, you can put about 2.58 on the salary schedule, and you'll notice, now when you look at everybody's percent increases, they're all getting the same type of percent increases. So, again, as employees, that's, that's something to talk about with your union, those are options, based on the 750,000. We don't know what's going to come out of tomorrow night, but at least, I want to make sure that the information that's out there with the public is correct information, and there's too much through social media that I'm hearing on that that isn't. Now, again, the next handout, this is for everybody, so this includes all salaries, all TRA salaries, every administrator, transparency, every licensed administrator, every licensed teacher, this is all public information, so let's be, let's be transparent about it. From 2014 on, through this past year, and this will go on the website tomorrow, and these are the percent increases. And I'll be very transparent, I've had a 2-point sum to 3% increase since I've been here, nine years. You'll notice a 16% in one year, start with mine, 118, 138, 125, why did it go up to 138? That was the year we went to peep. Went to peep, so then I dropped out of the insurance pool. Dropped out of it because I have a very negative effect on a small pool because of my health issues. So, I dropped out, it made a 3% difference on the rate going in at peep. It wasn't the brightest thing financially for me, because those of you who've been on Minture know that Minture doubled their rates halfway through the year, but if I got out of the group for one year, then what would happen is, by getting out of the group for one year, it would give the DGF group a 3% decrease on the new rates that they would have at peep. And then, one year later, I came back in, and then went back to my original contracted amount, which was a 3% increase. So, these are the TRA salaries, these are what makes up the retirement amounts for high-fives and everything else, it's all salary, contracted salary. So, you can see our three people that are at the district level, Mary Ann Martin is our special ed director, of course, Roseanne Olness is our early childhood, and you can see our four principals. You also can see the daily. You also can see the daily rates, hourly rates, and this year, the raises. I added those in over to the right. And then you're seeing the rest of the pages are all the individual salaries from payroll year by year. And again, some of them become higher, yeah, because some people had lane changes. That's all part of those, those three things that make up salary increase. But I think what's important, and at least so the public is aware, this board has done a, has done a very nice job over the years as there's been money available, as we've been a growing district. They made a pledge to the non-certified to change the compensation packages with the non-certified. That was a two to three-year process. And that was the first group that they did. Second group was the teachers. And so you can see the percent average raises in 2015, the average raise was 7.22. Then the next year, 5.32, then 3.79 and 4.14. It's easy to see which people didn't get as much of a raise because you can see they were at that terminal step. And they didn't have, they were already over as far as they could on the lane changes. So again, this is, I wanted everybody to have copies of that. The other thing, I've got a few other things. There's been some discussions, and we're gonna meet and confer tonight, so it'll be a good time to talk about it. Um, I think all the employees know that the very first article on the second page really, uh, in the master agreement is about inherent, it, it comes down to the school district rights and, and, and then the, the, uh, the union rights and such. That's the inherent managerial. And I'm just gonna read this for the public. Public employee is not required to meet, employer, I should say, public employer is not required to meet and negotiate on matters of inherent managerial policy. Matters of inherent managerial policy include, but are not limited to, such areas of discretionary policy as the functions and programs of the employer, its overall budget, utilization of technology, the organizational structure, selection of personnel and direction and the number of personnel. No public employer shall sign an agreement which limits its right to select persons and such. That's one piece. Another thing that, there was an email that, there was a communication that was out this week and, and it was accurate because it's, it's from the same statute about other communication. But I bring it up because the next sentence in it was not also put there. And I'm, I'm saying this publicly now because this is on the other communication. If an exclusive representative has been certified for an appropriate unit, the employer shall not meet and negotiate or meet and confer with any employee or group of employees who are in that unit except through the exclusive representative. That was put out and that's accurate. However, the very next sentence wasn't put out. This subdivision does not prevent communication to the employer other than through the exclusive representative of advice or recommendations by professional employees if this communication is part of the employee's work assignment. I'm the one who puts together the spreadsheets. Any one of you as employees can come in and ask, I don't know what I'm gonna be getting in a raise. That is perfectly fine. You have that right. We all work together. Every administrator one time was a teacher. There is no dark side. If we're truly gonna be in this about kids, we truly need to work together. I love this job. I wouldn't keep doing this job unless I wanted to see an impact, a positive impact for kids. And we can keep it, if we can keep the focus on kids and work together to make sure we're getting as good of contracts as possible and put out information that we can all feel comfortable sharing with everybody, that'd be great. The organizational structure piece, just so the public is aware, we do have a process in place and I think, I really feel good about where it is now. Communication wise, every employee in this district should have a means to have input as we're doing, um, improvement work. The first week of every month, so the public is aware, we have site leadership team meetings. They put the minutes, the minutes are out there. All employees can see those minutes. Week two, I meet with the admin cabinet so we can go over what's coming up at those site levels, what things should be brought forward next. Because week three is when we have the district level meetings. Turn right around week four and we review exactly what came out of those district level meetings so that we have circuit going up the hill and down, all the way through. And if somebody's not putting out those minutes, if somebody's not putting out accurate stuff, then we fix it. We simply fix it. So the process is there. This is the structural organization, this is, these are the bodies that are involved in the decision-making process. It gives everybody that opportunity. Now, the last couple pieces, the admin survey, we went over this with personnel, um, but just so the public who wasn't here knows, we, I, there's a survey, regional survey that, and I updated everything, I talked to, uh, the superintendents or representatives from the following school districts. Detroit Lakes, I talked to Doug, uh, the superintendent, who confirmed the amount of administrators at each level. Um, their elementaries have, they have two elementaries, so they have two principals, they have two assistant principals. They also have a two-thirds dean of student. At the middle school at Detroit Lakes, they have a full-time principal and a full-time assistant principal, and they have a .3 dean of students. The high school, they have a principal and assistant principal, and they have a dean of students and a full-time activities director. They also have a full-time district level, we've talked about that in leadership. We're getting to a point that we need to look at having a district level person to work with curriculum. So you're all getting a copy of this one, this is just showing, and this is the basis of the recommendation to have another assist, have an assistant principal position created. Because if we're gonna do this transition and do it as well as we can, um, we can't operate, we won't be operating very effectively with four administrators. So you're, you're seeing that East Grand Forks, I talked to Mike Olness, who's the superintendent. Fergus Falls, talked to Brad Strand, who is one of their principals, assistant principals. Morehead Brandon, I talked for an hour and a half Saturday night. Talked to Mitch at Purham today. Talked to Scott Brecky at Bee Fever Falls. So I'm telling you this because so you know exactly where this information's coming from. This is firsthand from those school districts, from those contexts. This isn't, this isn't generalized numbers. This isn't this 400, 500 to one ratio. These are the actual numbers. How many administrators they have and how much they have for enrollment. And we can all do the math. Last thing that the board has, and it's just, they already have had it before, but that's the transition plan. Um, again, the plan for next year is Heidi Critchley will be moved over to the high school as lead principal. Joe Keefe will be, um, at the middle school. Um, and then Margot will be at the Dilworth Elementary Site and Wayne will be at the Glendon Felton Elementary Site. We've talked about this for, for weeks administratively and had lots of back and forth as far as what would be nice, what, what is needed though, what is necessary with kids. We, we want as smooth of a transition as possible and that's one of the reasons why Wayne is moving to the elementary because the following year, part of that recommendation is we go to three principals and two assistant principals. So we won't have four lead principals by the existing recommendations. So we still have work to do on that for '21, but at least everybody will know who the lead principals are for next year at DGF. And that's enough. Unless you guys have questions.
All right, we're moving on to 7.1, approval of the meeting minutes of the February 10th. Do I have a motion? Moved by Sandy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Amy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes 6-0. Consent agenda, 8.0, claims and accounts for this month?
401,936 dollars and 86 cents.
All right. I lost the sheet here. Thank you. Um, also in your packet are the Minnesota Liquid Acid and Max accounts, activity account report. Can we get a motion to approve that?
So moved.
So moved by David and a second.
Second.
Uh, second by Ronnie, I think got it first. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries 6-0. 9.1, this is our policies. Amy gave us, uh, overview of policy 5.9.2, 509.2, open enrollment lottery process, 534, unpaid meal charges, and 535, service animals in schools. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Amy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by David. Any further discussion on the policies? Any questions?
Uh, do we have two on this for finals?
Yeah.
There'll be one more.
Yeah, this is a first reading, yeah, this is a first reading. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries 6-0. 9.2, 2019-2020 school calendar changes. Um, are you gonna go over a recommendation before we get a motion here?
Yeah, and, and it's, the recommendation I would have, it, we've used up our dates that we, our days that we could really do, you know, as far as, and I don't, I don't see of, um, adding on in June for students. Uh, so my recommendation would be that we don't add a student day. We utilize the seven hours, we have the staff make up the seven hours, but we, we work through site leadership teams and get recommendations from the site leaderships with the administration and then we'll create a listing of, here's the following things that you could utilize. It gives us a perfect opportunity to have, um, some site visits when they wanna do that after school and they can make up the hours that way. They could also make it up, uh, those of you that were on the oversight committee knows that, uh, Lee really wants to sit down with some departments in mid-March. And so that would be one of those opportunities if they want to do some, whether it be after school or if people wanna come in. We can't make people come in on Friday, the 13th of March because it's parent teacher conference week, so we can't use that date to make up. However, if departments wanted to do it and come in, Lee would then set up some meetings just with those set departments on that day. And then that way they could make up the time, that way also. So there's lots of options with it and I think we wanna get feedback and we'll go from there, so.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion on 9.2 to change the school calendar?
So moved.
So moved by David. Anybody, uh, second?
A second.
Second by Sandy. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any abstentions? Any, all opposed by Santa. No?
So Tracy will send that out then.
Okay. Uh, passes 6-0. Okay, 9.3, American Indian Plan compliance. Now, this is a yearly thing, correct?
It's a yearly thing and basically what we have to do is simply, we have to have a sign-off from the school district. We've already had the sign-off from, of course, the representative, uh, from the native committee. And so that's what it goes to is, we'll just need Lindsay to sign off afterwards that yes, they were in agreement with the compliance, they signed it, and now we just signed it. But we get, put it on record, you.
Who, no, but who is our, um, administrator that does the American Indian one?
Um, and American Indian is Wayne.
Wayne, okay.
Okay.
All right. So do we have a motion, uh, for 9.3, American Indian complan, Plan Compliance?
So moved.
So moved by Amy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by David. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries 6-0. Uh, 9.4, the 1.0 assistant principal position. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Raleigh, is there a second?
Second.
Second by David. Any further discussion?
Yeah, this would take effect this coming fall.
Yeah, it would be for the 2020, 2020-21 school year, yes. And again, we still have to, I think we need to go back to personnel and talk about, okay, well, I, I'll need to bring, my plan is to bring back, um, here's the comparative salaries that we're seeing at these other school districts that have the assistant principals. And that way the, the committee could take a look at that and then make a decision on how, how much we wanna offer. But at least we can get the advertising going by the timeline that I, I showed you before. I can get that out by Friday and then we can start the process.
Brian, so, I mean, it's, in terms of cost to the administrative group, adding this at least for the next year, won't have any real impact on it for this, most likely, as an entire administrative group, if you look at the entire group?
Well, for next year, it, it won't as much depending upon what happens with my job. You know, and my, my options, which we'll know that in a couple of weeks also, we'll have a better idea.
Yeah, I, I guess I think we need to go to it in a year from this fall, of course, definitely, and then, you know, it just seems like we need to do this transition now and looking at some of these and comparing the Purham one, you know, that we're still not bad. I haven't gone on the state website and compared it, we've always been under on administrators.
Well, and, and again, you know, part of that thing, um, that's another one with these stats that people gotta be careful about because, and that's why I wanted to actually have, here's the positions. Because there's a big difference between, in school districts, like for instance, DGF has a full-time, um, uh, special ed director. A lot of districts don't have, smaller ones don't have special ed directors, but they pool their money for special ed into co-ops and so then they lose all that money associated with it. And we actually make out much better financially based on our federal money that we get, but of course, on paper, it looks like we have more administrative costs because we have that position within the district and other districts wouldn't necessarily have that. So people have to be careful on, on how they're taking that data. And to me, the easiest thing is just run comparisons on, here's the actual FDEs that they have. Because that will, you know, if, if you look at apples to apples, if East Grand, Bee Fever Falls, some of these districts that are very similar in size to us have assistant principals at every one of their levels. And all we're doing is trying to get one at, at, because we know down the road, when we have the middle school and the high school at, all at Glendon, with that amount of kids and having the career academy that we're also having kids go to, we better get some help from those administrators, um, with the discipline or it's gonna be very hard to lead, so.
All right, any more, any further discussion?
Thank you again for putting this out, cause that's what I asked you before, so we could see what everyone does and if you look at all these others, like I say, they've got full-time activities and.
I had nothing else to do this weekend, believe me.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries 6-0. 9.5, this would be, uh, we're adding this, it's purchase of the pickup. So, uh, we have some handouts here. Fiscal personnel, we just discussed the Gateway Chevrolet, um, Chevy and then the Ford, Burden's Ford, a four-wheel drive. Both of them are four-wheel drives, both have extended cabs, both have single cab, is that what we call them?
Yeah, regular cab.
Regular cab.
Both.
Whatever the verbiage is.
Yep.
Um.
Three-quarter tons.
Three-quarter ton. I guess my personal opinion is I don't think we need a diesel. I don't, I don't think it's worth the cost to the district and I'm all for going with the cheapest one and that's the Ford and that comes in. And I'm all for going with the cheapest one, and that's the Ford, and that comes in.
Like I said, I went through this weekend and checked out online and what standard and what isn't, and when I moved them back and forth, the different
Yeah.
things, the Ford was 1,500 to 1,600 cheaper.
Yeah.
You know, we, I still think we, the operations committee needs to pick out which options we want on it.
Okay.
If that's okay, but.
Yeah. And that will toll the skid steer, maybe?
Pardon?
You don't have enough power?
Better than the half-ton, as far as pulling that.
That way, we can actually come forward at the meeting on, what, March 10th or whatever it is. And, you know, because the operations committee could meet in advance to go through all the recommendations on it, and here's the actual amount that it's going to cost and all that. So, it would be nice to get it ordered as soon as possible, because it is going to take, what, eight to 10 weeks?
Eight to 10 weeks. No, depending on what you guys came up with, can it go on this year's finance, or do you need it moved into the next year's or not?
It would be nice if we can go into the next, but in the end, it's all, you know.
Because he did say, you know, they could delay it slightly and jockey, so it comes in right at that point in time if we want to wait that long, but.
I don't think we can this year, though. I think we kind of need to get it going.
It would be nice if, it would be one thing if we could get the pickup in June and just not have the billing, you know, 30 days later on July 1.
They said they'd do that, too.
That's the, that's the perfect case.
The only thing we have to do is he could not find DGF's fleet number, get it online, and he says, if we don't have one, of course, they'll send it out.
And I don't know why, because I saw it directly at Gateway. I mean, I had to help the GEL find that, but we have a fleet number, so it's, you know.
We got the suburban out there.
So.
So, do you guys want to talk about the features
Can, can.
in, at the operations next time, or do you guys want to?
Can we just get this moving ahead of time and we work with, if I can work with, with these three operations, and them have the authority to put the things, to order on it, and just approve it for that purchase tonight, it'd be great.
As long as it has handcrank windows, I'm good. Just kidding, just kidding.
Well, the Chevy didn't, Ford did, but, you know, they can add it to the Ford for roughly 900, and you take off 1,400 off Chevy.
Okay, so then I make a motion for the district to be purchasing a Ford from Burns, and giving the authority of the operations to make the details for that. And so, that would be my motion.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second? All second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries 6-0.
Yeah, when I did a little bit of checking on a used one, it's 35,000 to 37,000 for 715,000, 20,000 miles, and you can get this for probably under 28,000, roughly, if you take. Doesn't make sense if you get full warranty.
Right.
All right, so we're looking for a motion to go into a closed session to discuss consideration of purchase of property. This is under Minnesota statute 13D.05 subdivision 3. There you go. I learned something this weekend at my chair.
So moved.
Moved by David. Is there a second? Second by Ronnie. Oh, right here.
Raleigh had the original one, but that's.
We're going to go into a closed session here at 6:54. Time, we were in closed session to discuss purchase of property. We are going to take no action at this time on consideration of purchase, so that is all I have to say about that, I think.
Yep.
All right, so next, we have negotiations tomorrow night. Tuesday, February 25th at 6:00 PM, I believe, Kelly, 6, right, in the Dilworth Boardroom. That's an open meeting. All are welcome and encouraged to attend. Then we have operations committee on Monday, March 9th, 2020, 5 o'clock here in the High School Media Center, followed by the board meeting at 6:00 PM. So, that is it. Meeting on burn.